In the past and present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties, and responsibilities, and indigenous rights while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We'll proceed to the approval of the agenda. Shanee, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll put the question on the floor. Are there any objections to approving the agenda for tonight's meeting? So a vote has appeared, and you proceed to vote, please. Our first vote on the new system. Okay, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. On to declarations of possible conflict of interest. In relation to our agenda this evening, are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? And that, I believe, we do by a show of hands, or anybody? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And for approval, we have the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, May 20th, 2025. I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the board approved the consent agenda action item as listed on the June 11th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda. Robbie, would you like to move the motion to deal with the consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Does this item need to be pulled for discussion? All right, so we will proceed to vote. Thank you, and that carries unanimously. Onto our discussion items, Agenda Item 5.1, and that's the 2025-26 Budget Update with Superintendent Roxanna Nagoy. And I'll let you introduce, oh, sorry, Jay.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us. And with me this evening, I have Jay Chantevon, our General Manager and Controller of Financial Services. And we will be taking turns walking you through a few slides that give you a very preliminary view of the budget for 2025-2026. As you know, with the delayed funding announcement, we're still working through final review of everything, so there might be some slide changes before we have a draft budget report at the board meeting on June 17th. And so keep that in mind as we're looking through these initial numbers. And I wanted to just mention, the published slides are a little bit different. We've updated them through the day-to-day as we're going through additional reviews, so I will point out where some of the updates have been made. All right, so we'll quickly go over the updated revenue and expenses for next year, the list of proposed efficiencies, and some additions to the budget, where we ended up in terms of financial position and a deficit elimination plan. Yes, we do have a deficit next year. And a quick overview of the capital budget. I just wanted to quickly review the key dates. We are currently doing the committee presentation. We have a draft budget scheduled for next week on June 17th. And then the final one, there's two dates currently being looked at. One is June 20th, which is here, and the other one that we are looking at is June 23rd. So once we have that clarified, we will update the website and provide the communication as appropriate. So going through the key budget components, I'm going to walk you through enrollment first. So enrollment, as we've mentioned throughout the budget planning process, we are in a declining enrollment state. We had a declining enrollment in the current year, 2425. We're also looking at the declining enrollment next year, approximately 960 students less, and that is about 318 less in elementary and about 640 expected reduction in the secondary panel, and that is as we compare to the current year revised budget. So in terms of history and projection, you're going to just see that if we look from 2018, 19, for a 10-year span, which we usually do for the ministry because we're looking at four years into the future as well when we do the projection, you see that we have been going up over time with the exception of the COVID year in 2020, 2021, there was a little bit of a dip, and then it went back up. And then starting in 2024, 25, you can see how that is coming down until 27, 28, when we are expecting to see more of a stabilizing enrollment and a little bit of a growth based on some upcoming developments. So I'll pass it on to Jay to walk you through the revenues and expenses.
Thank you, Roxanna, and good evening, everybody. So to start off here, our projected enroll revenue for next year is 990 million, shown on this pie chart, and of course, the biggest slice being the core education funding of almost 88%. I just want to note that out of the 990 million, about 27 of it is for out-of-compliance revenue, so we can't use that to balance our budget. It's related to land transactions. So this next slide here shows our revenues in a little more detail, broken down by ministry category and comparing to the current year's revised budget. So it is an overall decrease of 18.4 million, the vast majority of that. That's causing that is education development charge revenue expected to go down because of land transactions in the current year. That won't happen next year, of course. On the flip side, the core education funding on the top line there is expected to go up by almost 10 million, and a lot of this is as a result of benchmark increases. However, it is offset by declining enrollment, as Roxanna mentioned on her previous slide. So the next slide breaks down the core education funding a little further into the different funds, and again, comparing to the current year's revised budget. So this adds up to, again, the 10 million year-over-year increase. The next slide shows a breakdown of the other revenue line from the first table. So this amounts to 47 million, and again, you can see there the education development charge of 29 and a half million is the main reason for the decrease of almost 27 million on this table. Any questions on revenue before I move on to the expense side of things? Not seeing any, any online? Not hearing any, so I'll move on to expenses. So the flip side of the coin, of course, is the expenses, and this pie shows the slices based on ministry category for our $970 million operating budget. The largest slice being the instruction slice side of our expenses there, and then that's all the classroom supports as well as the wraparound supports for the classrooms and schools. So this table breaks down by ministry category, these slices into the dollars of our $970 million operating budget. It's an increase of 17.6 million year-over-year, the largest again being instruction, and the second largest being the people accommodations, so maintaining our facilities and whatnot. The next table here breaks down our instruction expenses further, again, in ministry categories, so it'll show, it shows all the different employee types that support the classroom directly and indirectly. So this totals 959 million, an increase of 13.2 year-over-year. The main reason for all the increases are, the vast majority of it is compensation increase and solid benefit increase essentially, while there are some decreases for budgets that were one-time in nature for the current year, or they were rolled forwards for the prior year that we're not carrying forward to next year. This next slide breaks down two other areas of our overall budget, the administration governance area and the transportation. So again, increases in both areas for the same reasons, compensation-related or busing contractual service increases. And the next one here is again breaking down more categories, people accommodations, so our school facilities maintenance and renewal, and the second there being kind of that other category which catches the rest, so that includes school general funds and our responsive education programs and secondments and so forth. So again, increases in both areas due to compensation increases as well as contractual increases, and the reps or secondments are vary year-to-year depending on what's confirmed by the ministry. And I'll pass it on over to Roxanna.
Thank you, Jay. And as you could see, revenues are increasing about 10 million, expenses are increasing over 17 million. So that is after we have looked at all the savings and efficiencies that we can capture in a year, and we will still have a $7.1 million deficit that we're proposing next year. So before we get to that financial position, I wanted to pause for a moment and walk you through the, what we've done this year in terms of proposed savings and efficiencies, and this is to address enrollment decline and efficient staffing, class size ratios. There were a couple of additional savings that are carrying over from decisions we made the prior year, as well as looking at some of the non-staffing budgets that could be reduced and some one-time items that we're not continuing next year. So all in all, we have reduced the staffing complement as a result of intended savings and efficiencies, I'll say, for 81.9, because you'll see on the staffing slide, we have the total staffing is about 90 reduction, and that includes some ins and outs, opening a school, so there's some other additions in there as well and other changes. This particular slide just shows a portion of that, which were the intentional reductions to address decreased enrollment and loss of funding. So that's a saving overall of 9.6 million, which is not in the 17 million increase in expenses. As with every year, there are some additions and some investments that we have to make, even in times of austerity measures. So we have been proposing to continue as one-time additions with these particular initiatives, which some of them have some offsetting revenue, so the total of this is the maintenance or addition of some of the FTEs in terms of seven additional staffing and a total cost of about 600,000. So between the efficiencies from the previous slide and some proposed additions, we still have an overall $9 million in proposed reductions for next year. So what does our staffing look like for next year? And this breaks it down, this is the total staffing, and it breaks it down a little bit in terms of some of the proposed savings, funding changes, some funding that didn't get continued as well, and some additions that are related, either proposed additions from the previous slide or additions as a result of opening a new school. So that's where you'll see, for example, the addition of custodial staff, for example, an increase in principals, and so forth. So all in all, the change in staffing is about 90 FTEs less than the prior year. I just want to mention the one reduction here that is looking at educational assistance, it's not to the base. So we haven't reduced the base of educational assistance. At revised budget for the current year, we were able to add 10 temporary educational assistance to further support the system. We believe we can keep about four, and then one was Jordan principal, so the one was funded separately, which hasn't been confirmed. If it will be confirmed, will be added on. So we've added 10, plus a Jordan principal, there were, there's 11 temporary educational assistance in the current year. Next year, we're going to try to maintain four. If there's any additional savings in a year, there will be a discussion whether or not we can bring it back up to the 10. So I just wanted to mention the seven less educational assistants are not temporary position, are not permanent position, so they're not part of the complement. So what are our budget pressures? So before I go into what we're struggling with or continuing to struggle with, I think it's worth to also mention a few things that were good news stories in the education funding announcement. Transportation was one of our areas that we were about $2 million in a deficit for the new transportation model. It has been updated, and there's been an increase in that funding, so we received 2.1 million additional funding. We are now pretty much at par. So we've identified transportation efficiencies in a year, so the increase in cost year-over-year is not as much, but the increase in funding was significant. So when we're looking at that enveloping, we seem to be within budget, so that's good news. Continuing to update the census data is also beneficial for us, and so that will help, there's still three more years to phase that in, as well as overall the benchmarks for staffing compensation that were updated, that also for us was beneficial. But we still have some significant funding shortfalls that are impacting our ability to balance the budget, namely, supply costs, so sick leave replacement cost continues to be, the funding is unchanged, so that continues to be a budget pressure. So it's approximately 10 million short. We spent 10 million more than what we're funded on supply staffing costs. The statutory benefits that included the CPP enhancements that were mandated federally, and there was no corresponding increase, so there is approximately $6 million shortfall. We will review that and update it because the benchmarks for benefits remain the same, but the staff, the average salaries have increased, which means that partially will be funded, but there will still be a gap. So we need to still review to see how that impacts the 6 million. I would assume it's going to be a bit less because we do have less staffing, but also because of the benchmarking updates. But nonetheless, it will still be in the millions that we will be short in CPP contributions for the employer. The other big area is the WSIB claim costs. Year-over-year, they've been increasing in the past three years, so for next year, we're looking at an increase of 2.3 million over the current year. And there's no direct funding for this, right? And we were looking back to 2018, 19, prior to COVID, I think we have about 5.2 million increase since then in these costs. So they are continuing to put a strain on our budget. Inflationary pressures, there were some increases, or one of the good news stories, that there were some increases for school operation fund, which deals with 2% increase for inflationary cost pressures. So that is for the non-salary component of operating and maintaining schools. But there was no increases to the components for learning materials, technologies, and other school supplies and goods and services in other areas of the fund, of the funding. Actually, they remain the same since 2008. You've heard me say this before, it is, you know, costs in some cases have doubled, inflation is over 40% since 2008, but the benchmark remains the same. Sorry, yes, go ahead.
Roxanna, is it okay if we pause and see if there are any questions from trustees up to this point? So if you would like to add yourself to a speaker's list, there is a little microphone icon next to the agenda item. You click on that, and then that will, on the, sorry, on the far left, or next to here? Okay, on the far left, and that will show your name on my list. So let's start with Amy.
Thank you. Roxanna, I'm concerned with the Workers' Safety Insurance Board claim cost increases. This is something that I've never seen us talk about before at budget time, and so I'm thinking these increases must be really significant in this past year in order for this to be a budgetary concern. And I'm wondering what's causing the increase? Is it systemic? Is it something that's happening just in school boards? Or is it something that's out there for everybody? And what can we do in order to deal with this increased cost? Is this something that should be funded through the province for staffing costs, is my question?
Thank you for the question. So I can only speak to the education sector. I couldn't really provide a perspective on other sectors or industries. So WSIB, we do have, we work with the School Board Cooperatives, Inc., which is, or SBCI, which is a cooperative for the education sector, and they gather our data, they're the board actuaries for the, almost all the school boards and school authorities in the province. And we also use them as an insurance. After a certain threshold, we insure our costs, and they're carried on under that program. So they're the ones that give us updates to what our claims are. We've seen an increase, and it's an increase provincially as well. We do get a glimpse of what happens provincially, not the breakdown by school board. We do get our own report by employee group, for example, and things like that. What we've seen since post-COVID, I would say, there's some additional, there was an additional category that is approved under WSIB, first of all, and that's mental health. So that, that is one increase that would have contributed to the, the cost going up over the last number of years. I think that was added maybe three or, two or three years ago. So that is one category of claims that before wasn't approved or eligible under WSIB. The other big one that we have is concussions. Because of the nature of the sector, whether it's, you know, accidental, whether it's our staff dealing with students with certain special needs and behavioral challenges and things like that, so staff get hurt. And we've seen concussions go up significantly as well post-COVID. So some of those have added to additional claims and additional costs. What do we do about it? We actually have a number of programs, but we also are looking at some pilots for additional measures and awareness for concussion protocol, so I could ask Allison to provide some information, and we're working, always working with our consultants in prevention measures.
Yes, thank you. Through Vice Chair, Superintendent Nagoy captured exactly what I would have shared in terms of the changes and the themes that we are seeing, and they are province-wide, they're not specific to Halton District School Board by any means. The mental health claims is a significant piece of what we are seeing. So the work that we do through our multi-year strategic plan in terms of mental health and well-being and the initiatives that we take, all kind of go to trying to prevent that, whether it be through a preventative measure or a reactive measure. We do have supports and services that we can offer employees. But yes, since, since COVID, mental health has been an increase with WSIB, and as Superintendent Nagoy mentioned, it's a newer area of WSIB. Struck by and against is also our number-one accident in Halton, and again, I would say that's not a Halton-specific theme, it is province-wide as well, and it is, it is both by accidents in the school from students or even getting hit in the head by balls, literally, as accidents, which is, which is a major factor, and we are looking into piloting a program if we're able to next year to kind of address that and hope to see a decrease.
Thank you. Can I have a follow-up? So is, is there, I know you have your own provincial organization, and since this is a province-wide issue, has it been brought to the attention of the Ministry of Education that this is a stress on school boards?
We certainly have, but I think as we're going through this budget process and the updates to the funding formula, the focus will be on what I mentioned, sick leave costs, the CPP shortfall still, and looking at WSIB costs being reflected somehow in the funding formula going forward.
Okay. My concern on this is that if we're not addressing the root cause, which is mental health for a good number of these claims, then it's, it's not going to go away. So I'm concerned on behalf of our staff and also on behalf of our students. Thanks. Thank you, and our next speaker is Robbie.
Thank you, Dad. Briefly onto that topic before going to my own question. I heard mental health is one root cause, I heard violence in the classroom is another root cause, and that is something that teachers across the province have been telling us has been a growing problem over decades, and something that we may need to think about both locally and provincially. My question is around the line items for textbooks and supplies and computers in the instruction expense slide. They're down seemingly about 12% year-over-year. Our enrollment is looking down 2%, so you would expect perhaps some reduction, low costs are increasing, not decreasing. What would the consequence of this kind of reduction be in terms of what, what the resources are present in classrooms?
So I can start, and Roxanna can chime in. So to speak on the reduction on those two lines specifically, year-over-year, there's a lot of roll-forward budget that's in the current years that is not being reflected in the next year's budget, so a couple of them, yeah.
Sorry, just break apart the jargon of a roll-forward. What do you mean by that? Is money that we were spending last year that we're not going to spend this year?
Well, we don't know what to roll forward into next year yet because the current fiscal year is not over. So at year-end, we'll know what's left of that monies, and we'll capture it at revised estimates. So we do this every, every year at the revised estimates time, carry forward the unspent money for envelope areas. So two off the top are indigenous education, the Product Action Plan budget for that is in the millions, so that's a large portion of the textbooks and supplies line there that went down for now, but I'm fairly confident that we'll have a carry forward into next year and more reflected at that time at revised estimates. The computers line, so there is a one-time budget in there of almost a million dollars that was in the current year's budget that we've removed for next year for cybersecurity.
Thank you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Donna. Is Donna on the list? Okay, go ahead, Donna. Donna, can you hear us? You're next on the speaker's list if you wish to speak. You're next on the speakers list if you wish to speak. Okay, we'll come back to Donna and let's go on to Carol, please. Oh, there, okay. Donna's here. All right. Go ahead, Donna. I think you're on mute. Oh, no, you don't have, your audio is not working. Would you like to email the question to Amy, please? Thank you. Okay, so we'll proceed to Carol.
Okay, just continuing on that conversation about underfunding for benefits and WSIB. I was just wondering, are those specifically funded by the ministry? Are you, is the board given an allocation that is to go to federal benefits and to WSIB costs? And so in our case, underfunded or funded? So it's part of the general funding that we receive? Based on the number of staff they expect the board to have based on the number of students? Is that, no?
So it, it, it isn't broken down quite like that. So benefits is one percentage over, it's a percentage that is applied to an average salary benchmark. And then based on your other factors, enrollment and other socioeconomic factors, for example, you get an allocation of how many FTEs of staffing you should be having for various employee groups times that average salary benchmark. So you could be a bit lower for a less experienced staff, you could be higher for, but it's just an average funding. And it's a percentage. So that percentage benefit percentage hasn't changed. It hasn't changed when we had to increase the CPP contribution for one percent, by one percent. Obviously up to a certain threshold of salary staffing and then a lot of our employees are within that and then whoever's over is, is not impacted. But most, if you're looking at about seventy percent of our salary costs would be impacted by that one percent. So that hasn't changed. WSIB is also supposed to be all encompassing in all of that. It hasn't changed, but our experience since two thousand and eighteen is five million, over five million dollars because in practice, costs have been going up. So that's why we're saying they're not directly funded. The funding formula hasn't really changed to capture these additional costs that we see across the sector. It's not just a Halton concern, it's across the sector. But obviously for our board, it's quite, quite significant that we would have to absorb through future reductions to student supports.
So just to clarify, the ministry is funding the board in a transparent way to show that there is a particular percentage that is being applied to each position. And that percentage for federal benefits is lower than what it actually is. Is that, is that transparent and clear in the funding? Or it's your best guess as to where the underfunding is happening?
The benefit percentage is just a percentage of an average salary. And it's supposed to include everything. That, so it's not very detailed. It also, certain allocations don't break down staffing. So the School Operations or School Facilities Fund is called now, which is the Operations and Maintenance of Schools, has a large number of staffing. But we don't know what, how much of it is staffing. And, and one thing that you could see in how difficult it is to, to know what, how to expect the changes. I just wanted to go to the provincial grants. So in here, the school, this is the revenue slide, the, the core education funding breakdown. The School Facilities Fund, year over years, going up by five hundred thousand almost. That includes two percent increase for non-staffing component for keeping up with inflation. And the increases to compensation, which are about three percent or two. It, it actually, it's about three percent for that group because it's a dollar per hour for, for staff. Yet we're only going up half a million. Let's look at pupil accommodations expense. Three point two million expense going up, but the funding is only half a million. Because there's an enrollment decline component and that impacts certain things in the background. We cannot see the details. I cannot see anything in terms of the staffing costs, the benefit costs. So there's, it depends on where you're looking in those funding. It's not transparent, it's not easy to pick out. So what we're saying is the percentage of the benefit hasn't gone up when our costs went up by one percent. For CPP, it's pretty easy to see that that hasn't been included. And when our WSIB costs are tripling, it's also not, it is also not being addressed in any shape or form because the funding stays as the same, right? Because our cost for WSIB will go up with, with the salaries as well. It's how many people we have on leave that has gone up, which isn't really being factored in. So it's, it's a bit complex to look at it and you can't quite pinpoint how much is supposed to be for one benefit versus the other.
Okay, thank you. Let's circle back to Donna and Amy has her question.
Thank you. So Donna's question is regarding slide thirteen. And she would like to know what is the difference between coordinators and consultants?
So that is a ministry terminology. So for, for us, those are the instructional program leads, which are central teaching staff that develop programming, develop curriculum, professional development and support for staff. And the learning resource teachers, which are also central teaching positions that are, that'll be going into schools to support both teachers as well as students in areas of need, one-on-one or small group setting. So that's what that refers to in terms of our language. But the ministry's categories use coordinators and consultants. So it really is looking at central teaching positions.
Thank you. I also have a question for Jean on slide nineteen, budget pressures. Are new builds considered as a budget pressure? And if so, is it under increased facility costs?
So new builds as a capital construction budget is not. That's part of the capital budget and is fully funded through capital priorities. Opening a new school is going to be a budget pressure when we're in a declining enrollment? Because I just showed you as an example that our facilities portion of the funding went up by less than half a million. But our actual costs, which are in, in reality, with additional school opening, same square footage to be cleaned, same number of school yards to be maintained, has gone up by, by three point two million. So yes, operationally, but not the construction portion.
Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions from our online guests. Okay, thank you. And next on our list is Kelly.
Thank you through you. First, I'd like to say I'm, I'm really happy to hear that our transportation funding was increased and that, that isn't a pressure so much anymore. It's nice to get rid of at least one of our pressures. My question again is on slide thirteen regarding the textbooks and supplies. So we have a decrease of two point four million and I know that we're not losing that many students. So why is there such a significant drop in our textbooks and supplies? And is that, is, so one of my questions, is it because we're going more towards digital as opposed to actual hard copy? Or is it, I just, I just, I guess my question is, what is it? Why is it dropping?
So I'll speak to that. It's a roll forward budgets in the current year that we've taken back for next year. Because we don't know what the roll forward amount will be. So it's, again, when we get to revise estimates in the fall, we'll know what that is and we'll add it back. And they are envelope fundings. So the biggest one, as mentioned earlier, was Indigenous Board Action Plan budget. That'll carry forward when we know how much to carry forward. So that makes up a large chunk of that for the textbooks and supplies line.
Okay, so that Indigenous piece is part of that. Okay, I guess I missed that piece of it. So that means like last year's budget, the twenty-three six was, was lower when we looked at it last year. And then we had a carry forward that made it the twenty-six, three-six. And is that something that happens every year?
Yes, that's correct. So yeah, at, at, at estimates time, we don't know how much carry forward will be. But revised, we do because we finished year end and then we added at revised. So it'll be the same, likely the same story for this coming fall.
Okay, thank you very much, Jay.
And just quickly, I want to mention that those deferred revenues or roll forwards, right? They have a revenue offset too. So right now, you don't see them anywhere. And then if you see higher expense, you're also going to see an increase in revenues when we bring it in from deferred revenue to, to cover. So it won't impact the bottom line.
Okay, thank you. And along those lines, there's also a decrease of one point two million in the area of computers. So is that the same case as for the textbooks and supplies?
A, a large chunk of that is one million for cybersecurity as a one-time budget add for the current year. So we've taken that off the, of our base for next year at this time.
Thank you. And I'm wondering if you could remind us or at least remind me why we see such a large decrease in the educational development charges for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six revenue? It's twenty-nine and a half million.
So that is, that has to do with the timing of, of when we purchase a site. So that for the, the current year, we have a planned purchase, which is actually going through next week. But that's not next year. So again, it's out of compliance. It will not impact our operating budget because you, we have the education development charges revenue to offset the expenses as well. So that's the, the only change is the timing of a purchase of land between one year. We have one this year. We don't have that next year.
Okay, thank you. I think you said that, but I didn't quite register it. Thank you very much. Okay, I don't see any more questions on this part of the presentation. So go ahead, please.
We only have a couple of slides, so only a couple of minutes. But any questions are welcome because this is a lot to absorb before we have to approve the budget. So this is what our financial position is proposed for trustees to approve. What will go to the ministry will be seven point one million deficit for compliance. Our compliance room is about eight point five, I want to say. So we could go as, as far as I can find, of, of course, we, by regulation, we are required to balance this year. If we don't balance this year, with board approval, we will be submitting on the next slide. I have proposed in-year deficit elimination plan for the seven point one. And then we also need ministry approval. So I just wanted to be very clear, even if the board approves the direction that with the nine million we've reduced in year and with the proposed changes for next year to balance the budget, the ministry can still come back and require us to do something a bit different. So we, we won't know until we receive their approval. So there's two components to approving the budget for next year if it is in a deficit position. Given how late the funding was released and the timelines for staffing and other things, when we were looking at efficiencies, we really were expecting to be a lot closer than where the funding has ended in terms of losing those students and how it trickled through some of the, the funding allocations. For example, the School Facilities Fund where we would, we would have seen a few million extra in, in funding there. So what we were proposing in, in light of the changes that we've done for twenty-four, twenty-five, as you'll recall, we already reduced ten million and over a hundred positions for the current year. We're reducing ninety positions and about nine million already within the budget for next year. We are still left with about seven point one million. We just simply, in a declining enrollment, we simply cannot use funding from other areas to cover for sick leave and for unfunded benefit costs. And for that, I mean CPP and WSIB costs as well. We are not in, in that, when we grow, we have additional funding and additional flexibility. We no longer can manage without actual reduction to programs, to student supports, to everything all across the board. So seven point one million is what we would propose to move forward. This is a rough in-year deficit elimination proposal that we will be submitting to the ministry. As you can see, there will be temporary as well as permanent positions that are going to be impacted. So over five million, it could be even more depending on where enrollment is going to be projected for next year. We do expect an increase in international students that will help a little bit. We will be looking at all the budgets, all the areas. There's a couple of one-time things we can take off the list. But this is what we're going to propose to the ministry to approve for us. These are additional reductions in addition to the nine million we've presented. We can't tell you what the details are for those because we do have to do that exercise. We're going to start in the fall and review and consult. And that is the outline of what we're looking for next year. Just quickly, I'll take thirty seconds. The capital budget is expected to be just over ninety point six million. And around ninety point six million, it is fully funded with various capital, ministry capital or education development charges funding. And this slide here just highlights our work. There's a lot going on. We are declining enrollment, but we're also growing in some areas. So there's, as you can see, four school constructions on the go. One opening in September, one in two thousand and twenty-seven. And two are being in the consulting and construction space. We are also doing a number of large capital projects, which is listed here. And a lot of work at every single school outside of this as well. And with that, we'll be happy to take any other questions.
Thank you. Amy, go ahead.
So it's really not good news that we're looking at seven point one million when we've made cut after cut after cut the past few years. And we thought we'd be finally in a, a better position this year. So I have two questions. One, we used to get grants announced partway through the year. There were things like mental health grants and things like that. What's the probability? Can you foresee, is there any hint that we may get some of those kinds of monies? And the second question would be, well, I'll answer the first question.
We do get additional funding through the year. So there's, it's, it's not in the budget, but it's expected and it will have both a revenue and an expense component. So it will be offset. So some of them are already announced at the province level. Just, they just haven't been broken down for by board. So we know they're coming. They're probably going to be similar to the current year. But there's also an expectation to add expenses or staffing or whatever it is. Purchase certain tools, whether it's a math tool or an early reading tool or whatever it might be for. So some of that will be coming. I think what you're trying to allude is, are we going to get some additional funding that we're not expecting? So far, I, I don't have any information on that. If, if there are going to be additional priorities that surface through the year, the ministry might provide more investments, like maybe it is mental health. And then they say every board maybe gets another lead or another something to, to do certain work. Again, that would provide money for us to add to expenses as well. So it won't be reducing our seven million deficit.
Okay, my final question, I hope, is I, I've heard no mention of the tariffs in the presentation of this budget. And I'm wondering if the tariffs have had an impact on our budget? And I'm wondering if the tariffs have had an impact um, on our budget numbers.
So certainly what we've, we see are some increases overall in, in um, procurement of goods. Um, we have been doing a lot of work in the last few weeks to really push back on uh, you know, you, using US vendors, finding a local Canadian vendor. Um, so looking for different alternatives. Sometimes that Canadian vendor is a bit more expensive, perhaps economies of scale, maybe uh, you know, different size uh, operations. So there, there is some impact. Can I quantify it? Not at this point. Uh, how much is a direct link of tariffs and how much is a market overall condition uh, that may increase costs? It's also difficult to, to set aside. We didn't put any provisions in the budget. We couldn't afford to put provisions in the budget for significant impacts on the tariff. So if they do occur, we will be in a worse position at revised budget.
Thank you. Um, Kelly.
Um, thank you through you. Um, I can't remember what number it was, but the um, the page that had all the, the major concerns. Um, I, I think you got cut off before you finished um, talking about them all. But the one I was looking at was that we're going to exceed the funding envelope by eleven million for special education and student well-being. And I mean, that's just unreal. I mean, I, I, I can't even get my head around it because we have been so underfunded for spec ed um, and s- and student well-being for so long. And it just keeps increasing the amount between what we actually need and what the actual funding is. And I mean, the problem is, we can't go back to parents and say, we can't fund your um, the programs that you need for your students or give you the support you need. Because y- you know very well that they'd be running to the government saying, well, we, we need those programs. And just like we say, we need those programs for those students. Is it a significant increase for this year in the gap? Or has it been consistent, I guess, is my concern? And then I have another question after that.
Thank you, Kelly, and it's, it's a good question. And yes, I think we paused on this slide. Um, so special education and student well-being uh, was uh, in a um, we exceeded, uh, the, we exceeded the, the, the costs uh, over the funding by about seven point five million in the current year. So yes, it's going up uh, to eleven. As I mentioned, a lot of that um, is uh, i- is as a result of the sick leave shortage, the CPP uh, funding shortfall as well as the WSIB cost. So that uh, employee group in particular will have a significant um, proportion of um, supply costs increases and WSIB claim increases in particular. So yes, it's, it's gone up to eleven million year over year uh, to, because of those reasons. But also because the funding has been, or special education is in part based on enrollment, and we have an enrollment decline. And in enrollment decline, you also lose funding, although you get some increases because of com- benchmark compensation, benchmark increases and so forth. So it's both an increase to the expense side for those because we haven't changed uh, the staffing supports. We try to maintain the status quo. Um, only some changes made based on enrollment uh, for um, programs. Um, so we haven't changed that. So it's the, the s- the supply costs, it's the WSIB claims, and it's the loss in overall uh, funding as a result of enrollment decline that has increased uh, the funding envelope difference.
Um, thank you for that. Um, I guess my biggest concern around this is, the government is announcing that this is a record funding for education. But when you look at the numbers based on, um, say back two thousand and eight and you do comparison, what they're, they have not um, even looked at cost of living or um, inflation increases or any of those pieces. And they're underfunding certain areas and not funding others, such as the CPP and EI. And it looks like the WSIB um, area now. Um, and then the government is also setting it up so that it, it's going to be very difficult for school boards to complain about our deficit because um, they're looking at taking more control. And I, I, I just, we're, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. And when you look at potentially having to decrease another nine million dollars next year, I mean, that is going to so hurt the system. As a board, we have been one of the best performing boards in the province. And that comes out through our EQAO numbers and through other means. And if they expect boards to continue on the way they are and they keep undercutting us the way they have been, students are not going to be able to get the education that they've had in the past or expect. And I, and it just breaks my heart. I don't know what to say about it. I just know that we have to continue as a board to keep advocating in the best way possible. And um, thank you, um, Roxanna, to your department and to senior admin for looking at the numbers and making some of the hard decisions about where can we make cuts. But it, it's, it's just, we're going to really have to be educating um, our community that this is happening. Because if they, if they expect the education that we, they've had in the past, I can't see it happening if we have to keep cutting. It's just, to me, it's devastating.
Thank you very much, Kelly, for those comments. I really appreciate them. Uh, we'll move on to Robbie.
Thank you. Uh, a couple of things. First, in response to Kelly's question, I heard you say that uh, part of the spec ed pressure was because that employee group uh, was drawing more uh, WSIB, et cetera, costs, which almost sounds like it's being counted in both places. Uh, is, is that cost, are, are those separate costs or is that cap- single cost being counted twice in both gaps?
So this slide is not mutually exclusive. Um, because, so what, what is separate is sick leave, supply cost is one pressure. CPP uh, underfunding is another pressure and WSIB is another pressure. Those, those are distinct budget pressures. The special education is an envelope, and that includes the compensation, which includes sick leave, salary, benefits. So there's a component of all of that in there. There's a component of that in all the other uh, areas of the budget as well. It's not easy to break down. There are certain things that you can do by employee group. And when you're looking at an employee group, one employee group is in special education. So that's, that's why some of them are easier to allocate than others. Um, but what we wanted to make sure is that the discussion focuses on the fact that we are not overspending on special education programs. Uh, is that, uh, uh, you know, above the funding, is that we can keep up with the fact that the funding hasn't um, increased to the level that we see in practice for um, replacing our staff on sick leave, uh, mandated benefits and WSIB claims, given the nature of our sector. So that is putting a pressure on the funding versus the costs in, across the board, but in particular, uh, special education and student well-being.
And, and to Kelly's point about the trend, uh, my memory, uh, was that a couple of years ago, we were looking at a bigger gap, but we cut three million dollars out of our special education budget uh, in the previous round. And that, that's accounts for some of the, the, making that gap a little bit smaller. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe we started with a seventeen million um, uh, difference between expenses and funding in twenty-three, twenty-four, I want to say. And then last year, we've made some significant cuts throughout different things and program changes, including special education. So we uh, brought it down to seven and a half. And now with the additional costs and the loss of some revenue because of declining enrollment as well, which impacts the special education uh, funding envelope, uh, we're back up to eleven. But yes, it would have been significantly higher if we didn't uh, do the measures for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you. And then uh, final point or question, I guess. Uh, the seven million dollar deficit we're looking at squaring away over the next year is relative to this year's budget. Next year, we are expecting continued decline, or this coming year's budget. In the following year, we are expecting continued decline enrollment. And so are we expecting additional cuts on top of that seven million when next year's budget comes around?
Yes. So seven million is the in-year deficit elimination plan we have to get approved by the ministry. The budget planning exercise for next year, you're absolutely correct, is going to exceed seven million, absolutely. Because we are expecting an additional, uh, I think right now we're looking at an additional nine hundred students. So the plan for next year is focus on student retention and attraction. So we're going to make some investments and in- and intentional efforts. Uh, focus on attendance support program and containing costs. So those are areas, international student program and marketing. So those, those are some efforts to contain the, the difference um, or the, the loss in funding. And then on the revenue, on the expense side, we're going to have to make up for additional loss of students. That, everything that's uh, staffing efficiencies for class size, uh, things like that. But in addition to that, yes, I would expect we're looking at ten million dollars.
Sorry, seven plus ten or seven plus three getting to ten?
So, so some of it is, is regular uh, reductions because of class size. Like we showed those nine million this year. So they will happen um, through that. And then there will be seven to ten million more. Uh, I, I have to say that we, we are doing most of those through attrition. And this year as well, most of them are done through attrition where possible, uh, like not replacing retirements.
Thank you. I believe Kelly said she had another question. Uh, Kelly, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you through you. Um, so I'm not sure how long ago it was, but um, maybe ten years ago, that twenty-twenty-five was supposed to be the year where all buildings were, became accessible. And um, I know that hasn't happened yet. And we have many schools that still need some supports to make them accessible. Was there any funding in the budget for that? And is twenty-twenty-five still the deadline year? Or is that, is that sort of gone by the wayside and it's sort of just been put on hold? Because I haven't heard anything about it recently.
So in terms of budget, in terms of funding, the answer is no. There's been no funding for, for that initiative. Um, I know that through Ian's budget, there's some uh, projects going on. But I probably will turn it over to Alison or Ian to provide some context in terms of work. Adline.
Yes, the legislation is still twenty-twenty-five. As far as we're aware, there has been no update um, that we've been provided. There was talk at some point that we were going to see some updated standards, but I have not seen anything.
All right, thank you for that. And next on the list is uh, Jean. Jean, we're ready for your question or comment. You are on mute. All right, Jean, if you're having um, technical difficulties, can you please email your question to Amy? Okay, Amy has received it.
As far as we've been provided, there was talk at some point that we were going to see some updated standards, but I have not seen anything. Yeah, AODA. Um, I'm, I'm reading texts, so I'm waiting for the next text. We'll send an email, not my question. Okay. Okay, now, now can you give us your question, Jean? No, she's still typing. Can you go something else?
Yeah, okay. I don't see anybody else on the list, but I do have a question while we wait for Jean's question. Uh, question or comment? Um, so the Ontario Ministry of Education funding is meant to address student needs. And yet, um, while we have a, a seven million dollar in-year deficit, uh, we do know that our special education needs have been underfunded by eleven million. Correct? Um, so I'm wondering, um, and it's more a conversation I need to have, I guess, with my local MPPs. Uh, what exactly are, um, is the um, special education taken care of if, if we know that we're underfunded? And therefore, um, the funding specifically designated to special education is not addressing student needs. That is tremendously uh, upsetting, and that has been the history with HDSB for a number of years, where the needs of our special education students were not fully addressed by the, that ministry uh, portion of the funding. And to see that any number of EAs, uh, whether they're permanent or, or temporary or whatever, and any number of them at all um, being reduced is um, is very upsetting as well. As I believe they're a very precious resource to students with special education needs and to the school because they do support um, staff, they do support other students as well. And so the loss of any one of them is um, is a loss to the system as well. And um, so those, that's some of that advocacy funding, uh, a- advocacy that needs to happen um, by our financial advocacy standing committee. And we need to be having those conversations with our, our local MPPs to, to get to understand what needs to happen in the province to make sure that special education needs are properly um, assessed and um, quantified in terms of resource needs and funding needs. And that um, school boards are fairly funded um, for, for our most vulnerable students. Thank you. And Amy has Jean's question.
Okay, this is a question for Roxanna and Curtis. What are you hearing around the province? How are other boards coping?
Uh, certainly what we have heard uh, is consistent with what we've heard over the past um, few years. Um, mo- many of the budget pressures that we're facing are being faced by other boards. And so this is a consistent theme. And I know that many of our provincial organizations have been advocating uh, to the ministry on behalf of all boards with respect to these pressures that we're all facing. Um, I know it's a, it's a challenge for many boards. Uh, you know, some boards who manage to um, to present a balanced budget, uh, do so with extreme measures, uh, such as uh, you know, simply uh, spending according to funding, which puts um, puts us in a, in a challenging space. Um, because you know, from our, our frame, we, we'd say that we're um, underfunded. From the ministry's frame, they would say we're overspending. And so some boards um, have moved to a spend according to fund model, which would mean perhaps the decimation of some of the supports that we have in place currently.
Thank you. Um, thank you for sharing that, Director Anis, and that is uh, truly very upsetting to hear. Um, public education is the cornerstone of our society. And uh, you know, we're, we're supporting and, and helping um, students grow and develop and, and become the future adults in, in this province and uh, take on a number of uh, roles in the society. And so to, to know that um, they're potentially will not be receiving the kind of education and supports that they truly require is, is very, um, I mean, upsetting is, is an understatement. Um, it's an erosion of, um, public education in essence. I do not see anybody else. Oh, we have a question from Carol. Over to you, Carol.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna ask this question during the, um, financial advocacy section, but since it's brought up, I'll ask it now. Um, so as the Chair currently of SEAC, there's been lots of conversations at that table about, um, our class sizes, which are very favorable. So the ministry is funding us, um, at ratios that we don't reach. And our board has a great reputation for having fantastic special education. Um, and from my perspective, and I think we would all agree that it's appropriate and not overdone or too much or too good to students. Um, so I'm wondering about our, um, our messaging around funding and starting to speak to specifics when it comes to special education. Rather than talking about general underfunding is to speak to things like we have classes that are funded at sixteen to one ratios, where prior to last year's, uh, adjustments, they were eight to one. So we're now at ten to one. I can't even imagine what a classroom of sixteen students would look like compared to the classrooms I've been in. And I think we've all been in our classrooms over the years, where we're seeing eight and ten to one. So could we work on our messaging and our information sharing with the public, but also with our MPPs to talk about what it practically looks like when you take special education and reduce the services that students are getting regardless, whether it's, you know, staff ratios or equipment or wherever we're putting money, um, that we're not being funded for? The other, um, point I would make that's, um, spec- specific to special education is when you talk about WSIB costs that are higher than the government's funding us for or supply costs. What is the impact on the staff members in that classroom when you've increased the number of students who have special education needs? So are we, you know, if the, if the board took as Director Ennis said, um, you know, another board's perspective will spend what we have, what would be the, the impact of that? So our classes would be bigger, would our supply cost then increase? Um, would we have staff going off on leave? Would we have greater WSIB? So we have to look at it in a holistic way. And so, um, you know, our, our special education is maybe overspent, but is that appropriate? And should we be talking to the ministry about the standards that they've set for special education, whether those are appropriate? And perhaps maybe visit some boards where they are working to the ratios that the ministry has set and see what the difference is, because I have never had a parent come to me and say, I think my student's getting too much, right? Or, um, oh, I don't think my student, um, you know, with ASD needs all of that. Like, that's never going to happen. Um, we also have a policy and a philosophy of inclusion, which comes from the ministry. And so we have self-contained classes that are being dismantled and then having students included in the mainstream classroom, which is a great philosophy. But if it's not funded to have the appropriate number of staff, is that then causing WSIB and, um, supply? So I think we need to be having some more direct, plain language conversations about what this looks like, because, um, I don't think the public necessarily understands all of the budget speak when we're talking about compliance and those kinds of things, and that's fine. But I think anybody, whether they have children in the system or not, understands the difference between an overcrowded classroom and one that isn't. Um, having equipment that's needed and not having equipment that's needed. So just, uh, I was gonna make that point at the financial advocacy point, but since it was brought up, I thought I'd just continue the conversation. So something for us to think about as a group of eleven moving into next year is, is what I was suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Amy would like to respond.
I know that Jean and Donna can't speak right now, so, um, I will say that OSBA is all over this. Our Provincial Association has been advocating for this for a very long time. And if, if they could speak, I know they'd be able to give you more detailed information. But the, the Provincial Association has this well on hand, and I know that it's one of the items that's on our webpage. And I'm hopeful that we will be updating our webpage this summer, once our budget is approved, so that, uh, the reality for twenty five, twenty six is very much, um, visible to the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see anybody else, uh, on the speakers list. Um, thank you very much, Roxanna and Jay, for this, uh, uh, great presentation, uh, summary of all the, um, challenges as well. Um, and we look forward to, um, hearing more on this at our next, uh, board meeting or two. Thank you. Okay, so now we're on to Agenda Item six point O, and that's, uh, committee updates, starting with standing committees. And, uh, board self-assessment. So I'll speak on behalf of the committee. Um, as you, uh, trustees, as you'll recall, I shared with you, um, summary of select results from our, um, board self-assessment survey pertaining to those domain areas that we had not discussed, uh, previously. And after tonight's meeting, we'll hold, um, um, self-directed, I guess, professional development session to, uh, to discuss those, uh, results and any recommendations that trustees would like to offer. And that's it for me. We'll move on to policy bylaw and governance with Robbie.
Thank you. Uh, the committee has not met since the, the previous committee hall, and we are set up to meet a couple of times in the fall with, uh, with some homework over the summer to do.
Thank you. And now on to trustee professional development with Navid.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, uh, we are working on preparing a survey, uh, to send to the trustees to explore the possible topics of, uh, explore the possible PD topics. So as soon as that survey is ready and, uh, we are ready to shoot it, we will update. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Um, and on to financial advocacy. So we've learned a lot today, um, through tonight's presentation. I think it gives us some ideas around, uh, what priority areas we want, would like to, um, address with, um, with the, um, ministry and also educate, uh, our community about, um, our budget and the pressures and why we have a deficit, um, and what we're doing about that. So I will leave it in the hands of that standing committee. Um, and, uh, uh, our professional association is also doing some work in that area, so we'll be able to connect. And if anybody, if any of the trustees who are not on the committee, um, have any thoughts or suggestions or want to share any, uh, resources, they're welcome to do so. Thank you. Okay, on to trustee questions of clarifications, uh, for tonight's agenda. Not seeing any. Then again, I need to look at the, I need to activate the speakers list. All right, um, any trustee news for committee of the whole? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we will now, um, need a motion to move into private session regarding personnel and negotiation matters. Um, Robbie, um, moves, and we are now going into public. Sorry, private. We're going into private. Okay, we do need to vote on that, so have a look in your new system. All in favor? Any opposed? Navid votes, uh, in favor. Amy votes in favor. Okay, that carries unanimously, so we're into private session. Thank you.
Okay, we are back in the public session of the committee of the whole and we have fulfilled the agenda and I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.